Meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second. All is in the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up is student reps, you know, a thank you ceremonial end to your career. Alright, next up is the, oh, Cami. Can you yell at Yashimi real quick? Alexander's right here. We forgot the certificate.
Sorry. Have a plan.
Again, I appreciate all their service and dedication to this board. They've spent a lot of time here, basically volunteering their time to represent the students, and I think each one of them did a great job doing so. So, wish you all, all of you the best going forward and what you'll produce in the future. So, thank you. And next up is the oath of office for twenty-five, twenty-six student board representatives.
Okay, so you're gonna repeat after me, raise your right hand. I Samantha Jimenez.
I Samantha Jimenez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the state of Washington.
Of the United States and the state of Washington.
And will faithfully, faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of school board director.
The duties of school board director.
Of the Prosser School District number one sixteen.
Of the Prosser School District number one sixteen.
In the county of Benton, state of Washington.
In the county of Benton, state of Washington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard.
So we'll ask you to sign. And because you're all three new, we're gonna do this alphabetically. So here's your nameplate, you get to put in your nameplate, and that's your first seat. Congratulations.
And have a seat. Alright, next Olivia Smasny. Oh, Ezri Roy, I'm supposed to do this alphabetically, but they were out of order, my apologies. You ready? Okay. I'm gonna hold it like this or I'll forget. I Ezri Roy.
I Ezri Roy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the state of Washington.
Of the United States and the state of Washington.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of school board director.
The duties of school board director.
Of the Prosser School District number one sixteen.
Of the Prosser School District number one sixteen.
In the county of Benton, state of Washington.
In the county of Benton, state of Washington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Alright, now I know my alphabet, Olivia, your turn. Okay, right hand. Hey, I know it feels kinda weird, but to make this work, we gotta stand kinda close. I Olivia Smasny.
I Olivia Smasny.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the state of Washington.
Of the United States and the state of Washington.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of school board director of the Prosser School District number sixteen.
Of school board director of the Prosser School District number one sixteen.
I see, I did it too long. In the county of Benton, state of Washington.
In the county of Benton, state of Washington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Let's give them a, let's give them a big round of applause.
Great, thank you. Well, welcome, welcome to the board, and we appreciate you taking the time and being here with us and throughout this whole next year. You know, probably won't, it'd be a little slow at first, but you guys will get it, Kim will work with you. I'll try to ask for questions, if you have questions on the agenda. The same as on the votes, you know, it's just a thumbs up for you guys, but, or thumbs down, whatever you wanna vote for, but, but I do consider, you know, your votes and your opinions, and so does the rest of the board, so, welcome, thank you. Alright, next up is informational items recap of the National Conference for Mike, for the migrant education program, Mr. Lare.
We're gonna go ahead and share our screen here so that everybody online can see as well. We just have a short presentation, Mr. Campbell, if you'll go ahead and click to the next one. So, earlier this year, you allowed us to participate in the National Conference for the migrant program. And we went down to San Francisco, it was a, an, a really special time because it allowed our students to present to the nation. We're talking the whole entire fifty United States, and so, we focused on a project that we did. Our theme this year was all about a strong tradition for a golden future. And so, if you could go ahead and click the next slide, thank you. We were there through April thirteenth through sixteenth. Just FYI, we did go down to the Wharf and have sour bread, so, thank you, Mr. Wine with that special tip. Next slide. Any, hit the next slide, sir. Thank you. So this was the team that we sent down, they did present for you in the beginning and asked for your permission to attend, and you did grant that, and so, I'm gonna go ahead and let them introduce themselves, and then they will have a little bit of a report for you and explain kind of their experience while they were in San Francisco.
Good evening, members of the school board, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight, my name's Natalia, and I'm here with Ashley and Carlos. We're honored to represent the Prosser High School and share our experience attending the twenty-twenty-five National Migrant Education Conference in San Francisco, California. This trip was powerful experience for all of us, not only because we got to travel and meet other migrant students from across the country, but also because we had the unique opportunity to present as part of the conference. We brought portable planetarium and interactive presentations about space and astronomy. We presented approximately fifteen times over the course of the event, with about ten to fifteen people attending each session. These presentations gave us the chance to step outside our comfort zones and practice public speaking in a very real way. At first, it was a little nerve-wracking talking in front of people we didn't know, but after a few sessions, we gained confidence. The portable planetarium made it fun, and we got really positive feedback from our audience. It was amazing to be able to teach other students, educators, and even parents about the stars, planets, and the universe. All while growing as leaders ourselves, we were proud to represent our school, our district, and our community on the national stage.
Outside of presenting, we also had the chance to explore San Francisco. For many of us, this was our first time in a big city like that. We visited iconic places like the Exploratorium and Fisherman's Wharf, and we learned more about the diverse cultures that make up California. This experience gave a new perspective, not just on science or public speaking, but on the opportunities that can come when we step outside of our everyday environment. We are incredibly thankful for the support of our teachers and Mr. Larez, and all of the other people that came with us to the migrant program. And all of you who helped make this trip possible, it's something we'll never forget, and it has inspired us to keep learning, growing, and sharing our voices.
Thank you again for supporting students like, like, the experience, like, this helps us build confidence, leadership, and lifelong memories. We're excited for what's next, and we hope more students will get the same kind of opportunities in the future, thank you. You guys have any questions?
How many students were there total, just out of curiosity, from all fifty states?
Oh, I don't have a final question on that part. All the programs were represented.
It's awesome, thank, thank you guys for representing Prosser.
Did you say you gave fifteen presentations?
Well, the more scary part for me, cuz I don't really like being in front of people, but that helped me after a lot. It got, I got confident, and it was fun, seeing the people and their smiles, and they want us to present more about the planetarium. I think the hardest thing was like speaking in front of people I didn't know, but I think the funnest part is like other schools wanting to do like the same thing, like try to like do something for their school as well.
For me, I think the hardest part, or like the scariest, was when the machines weren't working properly, and when we had issues. And the best part was when some people would like actually enjoy it, start like showing their expressions out.
The question, what is one thing that, that you took from all the other, I guess from other programs or other states? I mean, is there one thing that kinda sticks out that they're doing that you might wanna bring to Prosser?
Can you grab the mic, please? Thank you, I can attest that going to this conference was really eye-opening. Prosser School District really is a lighthouse. It does really set the tone on a lot of different levels, and so, there were some great things. We also collaborate with our regional areas, Sunnyside, Kennewick, so on and so forth, and they were there as well. And so, I kinda wanna share that next piece, if you'll move to the next slide. Our staff also presented as well, and so, it wasn't so much that we were taking away, but we were giving to the nation. And so, I'll bring up my teammates up here, we'll let the students step back, and then my teammates can share with you their experience, what they shared in regards to the powerfulness of PLC work in a regional setting, not just a district setting.
Hello, my name is Lena Hazard, and I'm the recruiter for the migrant education program. We had the opportunity to share about a PLC that actually kind of initiated here in Prosser, by me, and a neighboring district. He's a former recruiter, we kinda, I had a conversation with him about this, and I was a new recruiter, and I said, hey, would it be a good idea if we all got together with other districts? And honestly, it has really grown, obviously to the national level, and so, it was a really great experience. It was a little nerve-wracking, just like the kids said, to talk in front of a lot of people, but I think a lot of the people that were there were very surprised. And now, we've actually been invited to present at the state conference as well.
I honestly don't even know what to say, I was not prepared. I'm Lisa Whit, the program secretary and records clerk. I think it was a great opportunity for us to present, and it's still a learning for, for all of us, so, thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
I do feel like they're being a little modest, if you can look in the pictures right here, we have associations with, in Sunnyside, and Granger, and all kinds of place for, Walooa, all from the different regions, and so, this PLC also rotates, it doesn't just stay here in Prosser. So, our team goes to Sunnyside, they go to Kennewick, they go to as far as Royal City. And now, it's gotten to the point where there are other programs within the state who are coming and asking to be part of this PLC. And so, we talk about PLCs a lot in all of these different categories for teachers to have these conversations in order to provide better learning opportunities. But for us, as just professionals in general, to have these same types of opportunities to work together and collaborate has really helped us grow our program and really provide excellent customer service to our migrant community within the region and within the state. Are there any other questions we can answer?
So, your, your guys' presentation, was it on PLCs, or, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was on the PLC that started, yes, with a few districts, I guess there's not a photo up there, but there was only five districts initially, and now, we collaborate from Granger, Sunnyside, Mapton, Kiabby, Walooa, Mount Adams, Kennewick. It's just been evolving throughout the years, and it's really a great way to share different things that go on in our districts. And yes, not everything works for every district, but we'll try it out, and sometimes we keep it, other times we move on because it, you know, some districts are a lot larger than ours, like Kennewick, for example. But it is a really good way to collaborate and get to know each other, we've become great friends with other districts, and that really helps us. For example, we're having our graduation event tomorrow, and Royal City's coming out to support us, as, as well as Sunnyside and other districts. So, it's really just become a family and a really great collaboration, that's what we call it.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna repeat Jason's question to the, to the students, what did you see during the conference that you thought you could bring back to the community, or that someone's doing that we'd like to see?
Honestly, a lot of the things that we noticed at the state, at the national conference is just the collaborations between everybody and just continually learning from one another. I think for us here would be for our community and our staff to learn more what our program is about and how it works. A better understanding.
Okay, well, I guess I wasn't too prepared on that question, but, um, oh, gosh, sorry, I kinda had something, and I went out the window. I guess I'll say, oh, that I hope they took what we brought and wanna take it back to their districts. We had a few directors in our session, they were so intrigued, and they said they hope that we, here, I don't know, we're present about the same thing, but, that's getting a lot of questions, so, I hope that then we gave them some back to their district.
One of the biggest, one of the biggest things I took from the conference was some of the keynote speakers. They delivered messages about the power of relationships and building positive relationships within students, and so that they have trusted adults, and they showcased a lot of experiences where students had, you know, challenges, but because of trusted adults built within the school system allowed them to succeed and go on and do a great many things. The other thing that has really hit me the most, especially kind of in my heart and soul, is the scholarship winners. Over time, they, we were there when the scholarship winners were first initiated with their award, and then now it's been three years since then, and they've checked in, and they are all doing amazing. It just goes to show that everything we do, day in, day out, all of us in the district, is all for you guys. And we're hoping that you guys can take away from us something that's gonna impact you, and we can move on and do great things, just like your classmates back here on a national stage. And so, as we continue to move forward, it's been absolutely amazing being able to work with these ladies and these students, and so, we look forward to all the wonderful things that they're gonna create in the future.
Well, I really appreciate you coming tonight and debriefing us on that, so thank you, and thank you, students, for coming as well, you did very well, good job. Blake, is there anybody online signed up? Okay, we'll skip that. So the next item on the agenda is student rep, student board rep reports. You don't have to say anything tonight unless you want to, but it's your time to have, you know, a comment of whatever, whatever's going on. Oh. Alexander, go ahead. He's ready to go.
Yeah, just as a, a last board report, uh, uh, last Wednesday, I had my final meeting with Darlene Morrow, and we have implemented a physical box that students can put paper into, suggest changes or modifications to the lunch service at the high school.
Thanks, Alexander, appreciate all the work you did on that, too. So if you don't have anything, it's okay, you have a whole mother meeting, so. And you got a whole year ahead of you. We're gonna move on from that. Next up is action items, number one is out-of-state travel, Prosser FFA students to the National FFA convention in Indianapolis. Mr. Hader?
Mr. Hader, Mr. Follett, anybody online?
I am, yep. So what we had this year, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
What we had this year was on the AGMEC team placed first at state, and so they qualified for nationals. And then we had another individual placed second in the Spanish FFA creed, and Washington State is still sending two people onto nationals. So what Mr. Hader is asking for is for out-of-state travel for those individuals, and possibly some others who may wanna go along to national convention. And they will be paying for it out of FFA funds and fundraising, and the, the boys have been already practicing for the national competition because it's much more intense than the state one.
One question, this is for next fall, right?
Yes.
I guess, what happens if one of the students couldn't make it, if they graduated and moved on, and?
So, yeah, that's, we're, the boys are committed. It is a team of four, but we do have five members that qualified. And the, the boys are aware, and they've made adjustments, I, because we have like one young man is going to MIT in engineering, I believe, and another young man's going to the U, and I'll keep it at that, in engineering. And so they, so they understand, and so they're gonna work with it, and they plan on going. Because, yes, it was an all-senior team.
One move to approve out-of-state travel for Prosser FFA students to the National FFA convention. Then moved and seconded, any discussion, students? All is in the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you, Rick.
Thank you, thank you, I just wanna say, I think it's pretty prestigious. I would say that, you know, two of our AGMEC students are going onto highly-regarded engineering colleges to study engineering.
Yeah, they're gonna do some good work.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Next up is recommendation for hire for transportation director.
I mean, could you come forward?
Well, I'd like to introduce to you our new transportation director, normally our hiring is done in a consent agenda, but when we hire a director or someone of administrative credentials, we like to bring them forward so they can say a few words. I want you to know that our interview panel was made up of three people from the transportation department. I want you to know that our interview panel was made up of three people from the transportation department. Our maintenance director, Deanna Flores, myself, um, Jackson Hawk. So we had a huge interview panel. Um, it took us quite a while to decide. Let's say should come closer. It took us a while to decide. Um, Jaime's worked for us for a long time. Um, there's some unique things about Jaime. He is a mechanic. He drives and, um, he's gonna start a program at CWU, it's called a Transportation Director Program through CWU. I think it's three years?
Four years total.
Uh huh. They do it in the summertime, like, you know, when there's not a lot going on. Um, but I think that's really a plus. We're starting some leadership work with him specifically. Um, but the first day, actually, before the first day, then he knew he's doing, he's been picking up some of the work. So we really wanna, um, commend him. Um, Jaime, do you wanna say anything about yourself or what you wanna tell the board or your commitments to the district?
No, like I spoke with you, Kim, I'm a hundred and ten percent committed and I'm not afraid of hard work. And I'm ready to put that hundred, hundred and ten percent to work.
And that's evident by our text and phone calls at five thirty in the morning or eight o'clock at night, um, when we're making sure things are going. I think the one thing that I've noticed in our about two weeks of working this together is his responsiveness, responsiveness to parents and emails. He's calling, he's committed and he's making sure that things are done and communicated very quickly. So welcome aboard. They'll have to vote first. I shouldn't have said that yet, but my apologies.
Any questions for Jaime? One move to approve, uh, the recommendation for hire for, uh, Jaime Martinez for transportation director. Been moved and seconded, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Welcome, Jaime. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, next up is the public school employees of Washington two-year agreement.
Um, as I've been shared in the documents here, um, we did try and get them out to you soon. Um, we had a, um, I think the PSE had approximately. Oh, Blake's sitting back there. He was on the team. Was there seven of you? So they had seven PSE members, Crystal Cole, myself, Deanna, Andy. Uh, Darlene Morrow. I mean, we had a big group and it was really nice. I think some things that we need to address here is that the working relationship between the two groups is pretty straightforward. We, um, in every negotiation you give and get, some of the things that I feel was a good compromise, we worked on things like tools. We worked, um, on things like, um, trying to make sure wording was such that personally could be used accordingly. Trying to make sure that we are honoring the people that are working in the trenches, I guess you might say. And, um, so I, I, I welcome any other questions.
Questions for Kim? Comments?
Great work.
I move to approve the public school employees of Washington two-year agreement. Been moved and seconded to approve the PSE of Washington two-year. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the Proster Association of Educ, Educational Office Professionals, three-year agreement.
Yes, so I don't know that a lot of people understand this. We have two secretarial bargaining groups. We have the ESPP, which is our district office or our all-year employee, secret, administrative assistant employees. And then we have our building secretarial or administrative assistant group. Um, our goal when we negotiate is that they're, while they have different salaries and so forth, because of the number of days, we try to make sure that their salary benefit packages and similar, are similar in nature. When you don't work all year, you have different kinds of vacation and things like that. But that was what you see in this part. Heather is here. Um, Heather and Susannah and, um, their rep, Kendall, worked with myself. And Deanna, or let's see, Delise was sitting with us. Um, it was, I think it took us like two visits, right? They came with what they needed. We made some adjustments on, or not adjustments, but we talked through comp time, extended hours, making sure our employees understand that they're, I don't wanna say required, well, it is required, but they need to take their breaks and their lunches accordingly. And then we did just try to make sure that the ESPP and the PAEOP have similar benefit structures. Anything else? You can come forward if there's anything else. Okay.
Any questions for Kim? A move to approve the PAEOP three-year agreement.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to the second and final reading of Policy thirty-four thirteen, Student Immunization and Life-Threatening Health Conditions.
Um, there are no changes since it was first presented. Deanna is at avid night tonight, so I'm happy, happy to answer any questions, but there are no changes since the first reading.
A move to approve second and final reading of Policy thirty-four thirteen. Been moved and seconded to approve the second final reading of Policy thirty-four thirteen, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next up is the second and final reading of Policy thirty-two ten, Non-Discrimination.
Same explanation. No changes since your last first reading.
A move to approve second and final reading of Policy thirty-two ten.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the second and final reading of Policy thirty-two ten, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, second and final reading of Policy fifty-four oh six, Leave Sharing.
Same explanation.
Any questions? I, I move to approve second reading of Policy fifty-four oh six.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the second and final reading of Policy fifty-four oh six, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next up is vouchers. Any questions on vouchers?
Um, Delise Weddle is actually quite ill this evening. It's not like she's online. Um, if there is something, we would want to put it on the record and we will, um, if you have a question of one, uh, Celine and I will make notes and we will get it out and then we would bring it back for the public at our next meeting.
Anybody have any questions on vouchers? A move to approve vouchers. Been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to the consent items, one through three.
Make a motion to approve the consent items?
Been moved and seconded to approve, to approve the consent items, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That concludes our action items for tonight. Moving on, well, we'll, maybe we'll just delay the releases till next meeting.
So can you make?
Deanna's.
Deanna's not here. Um, I think the part that the communities understand, um, I, I'll share it in my report. Um, but we don't normally have board meetings on Thursday night. And so when avid night and so forth was put together and it's been published for a long time, they thought our board meeting will be on Wednesday. Um, so, um, in between illness and life, so.
So we'll set the, there, we'll just move Delise's to, uh, first meeting. As well as Deanna's. She'll be up there. So, Kim, you're up.
So, um, I wanna make sure, um, first of all, I apologize for having to leave the last board meeting. Um, it was a good thing I left. Um, I do wanna talk about my report tonight on the back of the report. I don't normally do that, but this came from my superintendent advisory council meeting yesterday. Um, and I'm gonna talk through it. Um, it will be in our minutes, so it'll be, you know, for public to see once the minutes are approved. There's a couple of things that are very important here. You're going to hear legislative discussion that they've added so much money to our, to us. Well, when you, when it comes right down to it, if you consider whichever inflationary item you would like to use, whether you use, um. Inflationary Price Index, IPD, or CFI, um, that inflation, plus what they gave us, really doesn't even play for the inflation. The, and so on the back, it shows that the total increase was, um, two point four six billion dollars. But it took two point zero nine billion to just keep up with inflation. So we got a three hundred and seventy-six point nine million dollar addition, which if you divide that between the number of students in our state and so forth, the number is just cents on the dollar. The other thing that I think is very important, if, um, you look at the paramount duty of the state of Washington, um, or actually, let me restate that, any state in the union is for public education. And if you look at this graph, in the fifteen seventeen, by, and forty-seven point five percent of the state budget was for education. Then in seventeen nineteen, it went up to fifty point three. Right then is when the McClery Act came into place. They went up to fifty-two percent of the state budget, but I want to make it very clear that we are back down to forty-three point two percent of the whole state budget, which is lower than it was in two thousand and fifteen. Um, I'm wondering why the districts in the state of Washington are financially struggling. All political, I'm a nonpartisan person sitting here at the table today, but we as communities, we as school board directors, we as superintendents, this has got to change or this situation's not going to get any better. So that was that. I do wanna talk about, um, our budget. We are working diligently. We've worked, um, through community. Uh, we've shared what the teachers have done, what our, our staff are doing. Um, you do see some raises in here. That potentially could lead to additional costs if that's the case. We have to right-size our budget, um, and right-size our, excuse me, right-size our staffing to match our enrollment. So we're gonna, um, you know that our budget has to be approved by August thirty-first. But we are, can't even really start in our budget till we finish the national piece. Because you don't know where it's gonna have to come from, take from, the Peter DePaul situation. We're not gonna know where that happens probably for another thirty days or more. So we probably will have to have some study sessions in July or early August, once that number comes, once that comes into play. On some good thi, good things, um, our property is up for sale. You can see the signs around town. We've actually had offers on the white church. Everybody needs to understand, there's a process that that has to happen under. It's not like your house, you accept the first offer and then you go to, there's a whole process that happens. Um, after you, you post it and do whatever, there's forty-five days. The attorney says it's not like cooling off period, but I, that's what I associate it to. You have to do those things. We've had a lot of showing, I think in the neighborhood of, neighborhood of ten showings at our Grant Avenue property. And, um, I wanna make it very public, you're going to see in the newspaper, starting next Wednesday, our, our local paper. When we did our hearing in January about parcel B, that was the lots that were over in Riverview. There's an error, not a big error, but we did not have all three in that public hearing. So you're seeing a corrected public hearing that will be at our June. I can't remember the twenty-five, our second board meeting in June. And we'll have a public hearing and then we'll be able to, we can entertain offers, but we have to follow the procedures because we have to do it right. We don't want somebody to think we didn't do it right. And if you look at the, the description that's on the Realtor posting, it lists all three parcels, but our public hearing, and we have to go back and, and correct that. So you will hear that resolution, the first resolution that we did will also have an amended, it'll be the same number, but it'll have amend with a new date. Because those parcels have to be listed on that resolution correctly, the legal descriptions. We had one, and we did not have all three legal descriptions.
I think before you move, I think it's important to know too that the sales of these properties goes to specific funds of money. It's not just basic ed, it's capital projects. So, um, that doesn't help our budget. You sell these properties, it's gotta be very specific.
And I think that's great. Um, it'll come up a little bit and down in facilities, but no, no, but it'll come down a little bit. What you challenged me for from the, one of the very first days when I started was, how are we gonna take care of our new buildings for years to come? That money is what's, we're going to use to paint or fix a roof or do a sewer or whatever may come up. That's what that money is for, so that we can be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and our facilities for many years to come. And so I wanna make sure that we really talk that through. So thank you for bringing it up. Um, informational, um, we, so, um, good news, there was some more sped money. Um, it increases the multipliers. So in special education, we get a higher multiplier for a special education student, and that number's gone up. Our safety net, it has, um, the threshold is, has gone down, so we have the opportunity to do more. Um, the M-SOC money, they make a big deal that that's our maintenance, right, service and, um, operational costs. However, the thirty-five twenty-seven per student, um, and an additional increase of four sixty-nine for the high school students, doesn't, that increase does not even cover the cost of our increase in our insurance. So I think, I, I don't wanna be not grateful or thankful that we got something, but it's not even enough to cover the insurance. Um, some bad news, there was no increases for transportation at all. Um, and I don't wanna get into the weeds on this, but we used to report M-SOC money in eight categories. And so we could say in this category, we got more or less money. In this category, we spent more or less, right? Well, now they've lumped all of those into one. So we're going to continue to use our accounting codes to separate them. But how we get the money is in one lump sum. So we can't, I think it was a political move that we can't say you're not giving enough for that because there's no way to separate those out. Um, we had a capital committee meeting, sorry. Um, and then we'll have another one on the nineteenth and we'll be talking about the selling of the property. Um, new tennis courts. I know everybody thinks they're beautiful and they're great, but I don't know if you know this, but the, all the surfacing is not done. It starts on Monday. So where it's black around the new tennis courts will be green and the second coat will go on. Um, so they'll be closed for a few weeks, but then the coaches will do summer tennis. They'll be ready to go. I think it's the twenty-second of June. Um, I know that somebody's gonna call me a liar on this, but how's the chiller is working? Now, we have a couple of warm rooms, but that's not related to the children, chiller, that's related to some duct work and some other pieces. So, good news. I have not had one teacher call me and say, my room, like, it isn't here tonight, saying that the room is hot. Um, leadership, um, I know that they're not here tonight. Um, we might bring them back in the, in the summer. We had the Southeast Wassa Awards last night. We honored the PTO. Uh, four of the PTO, um, like, officers came with us. To, by the way, I've never been to Meadow Springs Golf and Country Club in Richland. I like to play golf. My dad loves to play golf and I don't know why, I've never been there, but it's beautiful. Um, we honored them with a community award. So it was great. I think that was a big deal. Uh, they've been back since. And I did not know this, they're up to a hundred and fifty members. So they do some amazing work, so I wanted to make sure that. And then Deanna was honored with a twenty-year award. Um, I don't know why she didn't get it at twenty years, but she's a thirty-year award person, but I gave it to her because that's the category she fits into. Um, last pulse of processor will either be the second or the ninth, it kinda depends on what I have to report out, but we'll do that for the summer. Um, where you're gonna find me, you'll see me at migrant graduation tomorrow, graduation, year-end school celebrations. Um, where you're gonna find me, you'll see me at migrant graduation tomorrow, graduation, year-end school celebrations. Um, active, um, I don't think I have to do the dunk tank at the Fourth of July. They talked me into it. I told them they should find Mr. Bailey. The kids would probably want to dunk him and me because I don't even really know who I am, but um I'll be participating in the Fourth of July. Um, garden party, if you're a rotary person, garden party is coming back after about four or five years, maybe being gone six before COVID. And so it's August thirtieth. I'm active in that, and I'm the red and white knight uh committee chair, and it will be on Saturday, September twentieth. And there'll be a lot more to come. It will be at Mercer State Swinery outside, and I think that's my report for tonight. And I love my job.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim? Uh, moving on to board reports, Brian?
Uh, pickleball courts have been crazy busy, which has been awesome to see. Um, community out there, kids out there, families out there. Um, so that's been pretty entertaining to go by and and see the only action out there. It's been been good. Um, as we're approaching graduation here, end of school, just praying for our students to finish off the year, um, with all the activities and kids being kids going on, so just uh praying for their safety and um, I know they're all looking forward to wrapping things up. Um. Alex, you're the only outgoing student rep that stuck around, but did want to thank you guys uh for your work, and uh we are looking forward to seeing uh all the great things you guys will do um on this path called life. So thank you. And to our new student reps, uh appreciate you guys. As we like to say, throwing your hat in the ring and hope it's a enjoyable experience for you guys.
It's Brian, Lisa.
Lisa, before you start, everybody, I did a live video went out this morning about how you can use the QR for the tennis court to reserve it for special events, and there's another QR code if you want to know what's available. So it is free, it's open to anybody, but if you reserve it, you do have precedence over the other person who may just walk up. So we put a QR code there so you can see the calendar. So I just, I thank you for thinking it should have been in my report. It wasn't, but you can find it on the website. Um, we're gonna uh on the website and um on our Facebook post, um, and you can listen to the live and see how it works.
I'll follow up with the pickleball court information in that our library across the street from the pickleball court is offering um checking out pickleball equipment to take across the street and use, and they're also accepting donations. It's been very popular, so the more stuff they have to check out and use, they will check out. And the pickleball court, it's just been wonderful to drive by and make things during the day. That's wonderful. I was, I'm excited for graduation week, scholarship night, graduation, all the wonderful events for the community and welcome to the board reps and.
Lisa. Um, I don't have much. Um, you know, there there is a lot going on, I think, for these seniors as they, the clock ticks for another week. Um, you know, so like Brian said, just, you know, praying for safety. Um. I still haven't figured out how some chairs got on the roof at the high school, but uh it would, that's a um job well done, I guess. So with that, um, our regular board meeting uh will be next, June eleventh, right here in the school district boardroom at six PM. No further business. This meeting's adjourned.